Your phones, I probably haven't done mine either, but I'll check it again. Like to thank everybody for coming today. We'll get started here shortly. I was trying to give Commissioner White a few more minutes since he's chairman of the Budget Committee. But we'd like to thank you all for taking the time to come to the special called workshop. This workshop has been called to order by the Budget Committee for the purpose of reviewing the budget as presented to date. But before we get started, we might as well go ahead. Everybody logged in. Commissioner Meredith, log in your presence. All right, and we're, go ahead and we'll be letting prayer by Commissioner Anderson, and then the pledge will be led by Commissioner Waddell. If you could pre-.
Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to serve others and to represent our community today. We pray for you to give us patience and understanding with one another, and we ask you to open our hearts and minds as we strive to make decisions that impact so many lives. We pray for wisdom, strength, and guidance, and the comfort of knowing that through you all things are possible. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation unredone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Thank you, Commissioner Waddell. Appreciate you. All right, as we, as I said earlier, the purpose of this meeting was a recommendation to have full commission review the Budget Committee's recommendations, discussion, and then forward full commission's recommendations back to the Budget Committee. So that's the purpose of this meeting again, it's just a special called workshop. So what I'm gonna do is open the floor up. Natalie, did you want to come up and say a few words? And Natalie, before you get started, I know I'll express this, and I know many have already, but I want to thank you for all you've done for the county. You have strengthened us from a financial position, from a process, operational standpoint, you have strengthened us as a county, and I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for all you've done. We wish you well in your endeavors. We're certainly gonna be around, and I'm sure we'll still see each other more and appreciate what you and your families done for this county, and I just want to say thank you.
I appreciate it.
If anybody else would like to say anything, this is, I think it's appropriate if you'd like to, but I just want to say thank you.
I appreciate it.
She's not gonna cry, and if she does, it's just tears of happiness.
It is that.
And I can understand that.
Well, we'll see each other again at the regularly scheduled commission meeting in May. I did prepare a few opening comments, really just kind of getting right down to it. The Budget Committee has approved spending for next fiscal year that would require a tax increase. To fund the proposed spending as approved without reducing the existing fund balance reserves, a tax levy would need to increase by 31 cents. This does not include the schools' budget proposals. The approval of the schools' budget proposals as they've been presented would increase the total funding needed to 45 cents on the tax levy. And as Chairman Waddell said, the purpose of this special called meeting is to have full commission review the Budget Committee recommendations, to have discussion, and then forward full commission's recommendations back to the Budget Committee. So with that, I can speak to the highlights. I did submit materials to help facilitate this process.
Thank you, Natalie. Appreciate it, and yes, I appreciate all the information you provided. I'm gonna open up the floor to any of the commission. We'll just open it up to the commission and get started. Does anything, anybody have anything to offer? You have the information that was provided. The Budget Committee is seeking our recommendation back in some fashion, and so as chairman, I'm not gonna sit here and say we should do this or that. I'll certainly just facilitate the meeting. It's not my job to say what we should or shouldn't do, but rather facilitate. So I'm gonna open up to the floor. Are you raising your hand, sir? Okay. Commissioner Crease.
I just wanted to ask Natalie, you said 45 cent totals, that the school is asking for a 14 cent increase?
Built into that 45 cent tax levy increase, the way I calculated it is they've asked for nine pennies in the educational capital projects fund, and then it would be, I think, five pennies that would cover their proposed deficit of $821,000.
Okay, I got you. Thank you.
Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Spent some time this weekend, last week, going through the budget and trying to watch budget, talking to my coal county commissioner and to Catherine a lot on the budget. And I've got a proposal about what we're dealing with is two concepts of business here in Anderson County. We're working from either the bank of the people, which is our general fund and our other funds, or we're working from the checkbook of the people, which will be a tax increase. My proposal that I'm giving, and I'm sure there's gonna be some amendments, but this is just my idea, is working from the bank of the people that we already have. If we return the equivalent of three pennies to the general fund from the Fund 262, or 263, which is currently at approximately 1.4 million, which 80% is county money, 20% is employee contribution. If we move 486,000, it would give us three pennies, of which I would suggest, one penny to the Sheriff's Department, one penny to EMS, one penny to accommodate Solid Waste's request, Art Miller's request, and to balance our $2,500 each to the five volunteer fire departments. If we leave the deficit at last year's totals, we can fund employee raises from that because we had, I think her deficit was over 800,000, and we had revenues, see, we had revenues of 700,000, is that correct? Or we used 700 to cover last year's deficiency, that's what we did. So if we leave that deficiency there, that should cover all the raises we've asked for. Now, what's not covering this plan is any capital projects.
The only note I would make to that is the auditors have advised us, as contributions are made into Fund 263, it's based on current employee participation in that. So if we wanted to take the cash out of Fund 263 as you're recommending, then I would recommend that we do that based on the current participation and return that back to the respective funds. That would put roughly 78% of that 486,000 back in the general fund that could go to be appropriated however commission saw fit.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
That's a motion.
I'll second the motion, Chair.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Can you restate your motion so everyone understands clearly?
Okay, it's to return the equivalent of three pennies to the general fund. And that would give one penny to the Sheriff's Department, one penny to EMS, one penny to accommodate Art Miller's request, which is our health department, solid waste, and approximately 2,500 each to each of the five volunteer fire departments. And if we leave the deficit at last year's total, it should give us about $700,000 to fund employee raises.
Okay, so your proposal is to take the three cents out of the general fund?
After it's been returned.
After it's been returned. And how much do we have in the general fund? That's 101?
General fund is 101. If I'm understanding correctly, we're talking about taking cash out of Fund 263, the equivalent of three pennies, which would be 486,000. Again, I would recommend that we appropriate it back to the funds that it came back from. Are you including that in your motion?
That would be, yes.
Okay, so putting it back into the original funding source that it came from, and then, so once the cash has been returned to the respective funds, I heard you say to appropriate one penny to the sheriff, one penny to the EMS fund. I'm not sure what you said about dental, solid waste, or the volunteer fire departments.
I think the solid waste request is right at 76,000, Art Miller's request is 31,000, and the balance to go to each of the volunteer fire departments, which will be approximately $2,500 each.
Okay. I think I've got it now.
Good, because I need some explanation again. I just want to be very clear, so when we go to vote, everyone understands what we're talking about. So we're not really raising taxes, we're just gonna use those funds as you mentioned.
Right, we're using the money that's already banked by the employees and the taxpayers.
And the funds that we allocate, will they be reoccurring funds? You understand my question, remember?
The only reoccurring, if I understand correctly, would be if the sheriff used it for pay raises.
Gotcha, okay. You want to try to explain it for us one more time, in your mind?
Sure. So we're gonna take, we're gonna do an operating transfer out of Fund 263 for the equivalent of three pennies, which is $486,000. We're gonna allocate that back to the original funding source by fund based on current participation. So that's just gonna move cash out of Fund 263 into the respective funds. Then we're gonna allocate a penny to the sheriff's budget, a penny to the EMS budget, and the remainder to go to offset the dental of 31,000, solid waste of 76,000, and the balance to each of the volunteer fire departments.
Mr. Chairman, I would like the rescue squad to be involved with that too, the five fire departments and rescue squad.
Okay, thank you. I thought you explained that very well, Natalie. Thank you, and I appreciate you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You okay with that second still, Commissioner McCamey? Okay, okay, we have a question. Commissioner Anderson, sir.
A couple things. Okay, a penny to the Sheriff's Department, that's $162,000, so that's about a tenth of what they need to open Unit 1. So are, well, I guess what are they gonna be able to do with that? That's not really enough to meet their need, is that just gonna increase their maintenance of effort if they get to spend it on something else? I guess that's my big concern with that.
Good question. I don't have the answer to that question. Tyler's here.
As you can hear, my voice has gone. A weekend of birthday parties. 162, to be honest, won't really get us anywhere. Unit 1, it is, you fund it fully, or we don't fund it at all, and that's it. I mean, there's no, here's $162,000, we just, there's nothing in terms of Unit 1. So I would, you know, ask for a recommendation of what you thought would, we could do in Unit 1 for that. Operations, $162,000 would help with a couple of positions to max. That would be pushing it for uniforms, training, vehicles, excuse me. But in terms of the jail, it really is, and it's not that we're trying to put you in this position, it's, we either get in Unit 1 business or we're not in it at all. But I would be negligent if I didn't tell you that we would not be here later this year with the same issue, to be honest. So again, just to reiterate, it's either Unit 1, yes or no, and then we can, you know, the 162 in terms of operations, you know, we could, you know, we'd apply to that, but we wouldn't apply it to the jail.
Sheriff's behind you, be careful.
He's sick.
He is sick.
Yeah. The good news is he's not contagious, that we know of. Just to add to that, everyone received the emails, we had some great dialogue on there. And Tyler is spot on when it comes to Unit 1. That is something either we fund or we don't fund. We've made our arguments and why we believe that, and I still stand here today and believe that we need to open Unit 1. TCI, who we met with a couple weeks ago, they're talking about we need to open Unit 1. The one thing I would like to kind of revisit, we have TDOC and TCI. We have currently 435 beds under TCIs. In their eyes, we're at full capacity at 370. So when we break 370, that's when they start looking a little closer at us and talking about managing inmate population. Unfortunately, TDOC doesn't look at us when we're asking them to send back, or send away state inmates. TDOC doesn't look at us to be in full capacity until we have 435 people. Now, that's complicated, and I think this is an example we've shared in the past. We have a sex offender unit that, say, has 14 beds. Well, if we have two sex offenders in that, you think, well, great, we've got 12 extra beds. We really don't, because the only people we can put in there is sex offenders. Where that creates the issue for us with TDOC, and when we ask them to take our state inmates, is, one, the Roberts Order that we've been operating under since the 80s, the federal ruling where the big five, Hamlin, Madison, Knox, Shelby, and Davidson, get moved to the front of the line because of just their sheer volume of inmates. So they go to the front of the line. Here's Anderson County asking for 10, 15, 20 beds. What happens is, if we're not at that 435 mark, we're not full in their eyes. So that pushes us back again to a jail such as Rome County, who during their conversations via email, they have 170 beds and they were at 305, I believe it was. So the need for Unit 1 is there, we've demonstrated that, liability, things of that nature. We believe we need it, and as always, I'm glad I'm not you, because you have some really, really tough decisions to make. And we're not gonna have heartburn or discontent for anyone on commission with whatever you decide, but we've asked you to look at our budget as an operations side and a corrections side. We believe we need Unit 1, we believe we need what we've asked for on the operations side. I am very grateful for the offer on the penny, but we would absolutely not apply it to corrections because it does nothing to open up Unit 1 for us. We would put it to good use, absolutely. We'll take whatever we're given by this body, and we will be good stewards with it and really manage it to our best ability. But again, as Tyler said, we're simply, we simply, it's an up or down on Unit 1.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Did you have any other questions, Commissioner Anderson? We have a motion on the floor, and so any discussion should be related to that motion. Commissioner Meredith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask Natalie to clarify Commissioner Isbell's motion, especially on the raises. I was the one that made that original motion to Budget Committee. I appreciate your creative thinking, because we could've used that the other day, but my calculations based on, from Natalie, a 2% raise is almost $400,000.
Across all of the funds.
Across the board. So with what Commissioner Isbell's pitching, is this gonna cover the 2% raise for the employees?
So, and I guess that brings me to a clarifying question as well. So are you, you mentioned something about returning to the original budget. Is that just?
It would be 700,000.
So the deficit in this current fiscal year was $762,000. We do have growth in, I think... So what I'm passing around is what I prepared last week, if we returned general fund to the appropriations that have been approved for this fiscal year. So it was the original budget and any budget amendments that drew down the unassigned fund balance on a recurring basis. So in doing that, that would mean the budgeted deficit for the general fund would be 451,000. And then by this calculation, that very next line that says budgeted expenditures of 288,000, that's the 2% cost of living raise just for the general fund, because the respective revenue and expenses have already been applied to the other funds. So that would bring the budgeted deficit back to 740,000, it's at 762,000 for this year. But that's rolling everybody's budgets back to the original budget for this current fiscal year. So I think that's, when you mentioned original budget, you were, that's what you were thinking, correct?
That's correct.
So is there enough funds in his motion to give everybody the 2%?
Yes, without, right, without raising taxes. It still drives a deficit budget.
Right, I understand that. Right, okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And by the way, Mr. Chairman, I kind of got that idea from Commissioner Meredith when he was speaking about that, so.
Good deal. Commissioner Fritz, or excuse me, Commissioner Mead, I apologize, Commissioner Fritz.
Yeah, first of all, I agree that we need to go ahead and fund the health department stuff, the volunteer fire departments, and the emergency squad. I think clearly that has to happen. But I am concerned about the significant shortfall in the funding requested for the Sheriff's Department. I think that we're gonna be forced into opening that new part, that other part of the jail down the road anyhow. To not fund it now is just ignoring the obvious. But most of all, I'm concerned about the, what I consider a substantial shortfall in the funding of the EMS, the ambulance service, which is an important service county-wide. In my rough calculations at least, this is less than a third of what the audit team that we hired and paid $40,000 told us we needed to be putting into EMS. Recognizing that EMS is not designed to make a profit, it's not designed to even make, break even because of the way the money is collected and the way it's controlled by the federal government, what you get paid. I think we have to go with two or three cents for EMS, or else we're just once again ignoring our responsibility to provide a viable and fast responding EMS. I'd be glad to hear what the EMS director has to say in response.
Certainly. EMS director, come on up.
Thank you, Chairman. So ultimately, EMS will operate based off of the budget that we're going to be approved by this body. So whatever the body is that they want to do as far as funds for the EMS department, we will use that to continue to provide as best optimal EMS service that we can provide to the county. What does that mean? What does that look like if we are down to one penny? In addition, I don't know, I'd have to go back and work those, that information, and I can bring that back to this body or Budget Committee on Thursday to address what that would mean based off of not just necessarily our initial request, but what would that look like for our service and being able to provide for Anderson County. So of course, it's going to be less than what was in option 1 of budget that we proposed, but I'd be more than happy to take this recommendation and run that information and be able to present it back.
Thank you, Nathan. Any more questions for Nathan while he's up here, anyone?
I've got one.
Yes, sir, Commissioner McCamey.
Nathan, did you not present a budget with no tax increase or no additional funding to the Budget Committee?
There was a third budget. I think it was slightly out of balance, very, very minimal, maybe like $42,000 that we had a deficit of. So that's something, we would definitely take that information and be able to present back of what would this do if we got this, this is what it would do for the service.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner McCamey. Commissioner Scott.
Nathan, currently, how often do you go code white? Which means there are no available ambulances.
Well, it doesn't actually mean no available ambulances. Code white is, code yellow and code white is actually determined on the number of ALS ambulances that we have available. So we may actually have an ambulance available, a BLS-staffed ambulance would be available to respond to calls even being code white. So even though we do code white, doesn't necessarily mean we have zero ambulances available, just means we have zero paramedic-staffed ambulances available. So last time, I looked at that recently, it happens probably about 15, 20 times a month. On average, it's probably about four minutes at a time. Each time we go code white, it lasts for about four minutes.
Okay. And I'm asking because when you were recently on the news, you said six to seven times a week.
That's correct. Yep. So some months may be higher than others, but I think I looked at April and it was about, I think about 20 times in the month of April.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
That's, again, good questions, good discussion. Let's stay on the motion that we have. Commissioner White, I'll come back here in a minute and catch you up on the motion. But while you're here, Nathan, Commissioner Waddell, do you have a question, sir?
Hey, Nathan, did I correctly use the word raise?
Yes, sir.
Okay, congratulations on that, I'm very happy to hear that. How much of a raise, and where did that money come from?
So the money we have for this year came out of our current budget, and I just have to send you the information because it's different for paramedics and EMTs. So paramedics are starting out now at 13:50 on the hour. AEMTs are now starting out at 11:50 on the hour, and EMT basics are starting out, I think it's 10:50 or 10:25 on the hour. I'd be more than happy to.
So you don't have a percentage, you just didn't give a percentage equally across the board to everybody?
No, so what we did is, I spent some time, I talked with HR, I did talk a little with finance, talked with the mayor, told them what we were looking at, how we were looking to structure that, the 20-level system, all that information on what that change would look like.
So would this be about a $2 an hour raise?
Roughly, but it varies.
Varies, I understand. So you had 10 positions available, did you cut any of those positions to be able to fund this raise?
So going forward, that is a possibility, looking at one of our daytime 911 ambulances, which we were already considering in the budget operations. We ran demand analysis to look on the 911 side and felt that seven ambulances could accommodate that, which would allow us to shift the money in other directions. So that would be a potential going forward. If there's no change in our department, that could be a potential loss for coverage going forward.
Reason I'm asking is because I believe you're asking for, is it 14 new positions? Is that correct in your new budget?
Oh, so for the budget number one, if we would've gone to the 2472 schedule, yes, it would've required 14 new positions. I personally don't believe that we could move to that schedule right now.
I understand, but if you're asking for 14 positions, but you're cutting, my issue is that you're cutting, you're cutting people out of your budget currently in order to fund raises that, I keep hearing, we underfund EMS, and you and the mayor both stood up here and said that the reason people are leaving is because of pay, but you've had the ability to increase people's pay all year, and now we're coming up on budget time and you're increasing their pay. So I'm just, I'm confused on why we didn't wait or why we didn't do it earlier. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Waddell. Anybody else have questions, Director Sweet? Thank you, Director Sweet.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Were you able to get caught up on that motion, Commissioner White, on where we're at, sir? I seen Commissioner Meredith leaning over to you. Did you have any? Commissioner White, all we did was we opened up and we, basically, as a recommendation from the Budget Committee, of course, is to have discussion as we're doing, and then forward back to Budget Committee suggestions, recommendations, and we're at this recommendation today.
Appreciate you.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Commissioner Fritz, sir, you're up.
Natalie, the money they're talking about just coming out of 263, that is one-time money, is that not correct?
Yes.
So the money they're talking about giving to the different departments, everything like that, they can't not use, basically use it for reoccurring funds, because if they do, then next year, we're gonna have to come for that money again. So they would have to use it for capital outlay or different things like that. So for the sheriff, that money there, he'd have to maybe use it for patrol cars. The Art Miller, he couldn't use it to fund a... The different, Art Miller, he couldn't use it to fund a dentist because we'd have to come up with that money again next year because that's recurring money. We'd just be digging ourselves into another hole again for next year that we'd have to dig out of.
Okay, couple different things. The cash that's in the self-insurance fund, it's been built up over this fiscal year. Yes, the revenue source has been from the county and the employees, but the reason we've been able to build up the surplus through ca, or cash through the surplus is because we haven't had the claims like we've had.
That's why I said this is one-time money.
That's, well, I guess it may or may not be, it depends on whether our claims...
Good analogy.
And over the years, how many times have we've had to fund 263 out of fund balance?
Right.
Because we were, and I say funded, by hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Right, last year was $300,000, correct?
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Commissioner Creasy.
Now, I have two questions. And one is to Mr. Isabel. What is our total yearly contribution to the volunteer fire departments and the rescue squad? We usually give them each the same amount in years past.
Well, we just raised it a few years ago by $2,500, if you remember. I think it's now $7,500.
Per department?
I think that's correct. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I was answering another question, I'm sorry.
The contribution to the volunteer fire departments, because we just raised it $2,500.
I want to say it was, currently it's $27,500, I believe, for each one of them.
Twenty-seven thousand five, that's right.
Well, I remember when it was $27,000, so.
I think it's $27,500.
It was 25, and then we raised it 25,000.
Maybe it's $27,000, I don't...
Okay. So, is that, what are you raising it to now?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand per, that's good, okay. I can, I can go with that. The, and then the second question is also, the way I'm assuming, we're sending this suggestion back to the Budget Committee.
That's correct, that's just a suggestion, and I'm sure that there'll be some capital things that need to be funded through this. And my only proposal, in my notes, you know, what's not covered in this plan is capital projects, which we need to wait till next year or, you know, it'll be a tax increase. I'm just not in favor of...
I wanted to be clear that this is not our final decision on the operating budget. We're sending it back.
Just as an idea to work on, yeah.
And that, and I want to compliment you for taking the lead in doing this, that's, that's real leadership, real leadership.
Thank you.
So just as a point of clarification, because Commissioner Meredith was asking me a question in response to Commissioner Fritz, the 2% cost of living increase would be a recurring increase. If I'm understanding this motion, it's, would be an operating transfer, a one-time operating transfer, that would take the cash out of Fund 263, put it in the respective funds, to then be able to move forward with these other actions, some of which may be recurring?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure, because, right, so the $31,000 needed for the dental budget, that would be recurring because that's to fund the dentist. Same, in my view, the same would be recurring on solid waste, because they've, they're tied to CPI, they're going up over 2% this year. He's been messaging, ever since I've been here for years, that his operating costs are going up. The current budget proposal has their fund going into the deficit next year. So those, there are recurring costs in this motion, I just want to be clear with that.
Very good.
Very good.
Questions? Do you have a follow-up statement on that, Commissioner Isabel? Yes, sir.
But the way that that money's being put in there, it's a reoccurring contribution.
It may not, it may not be. What's, well, I mean, I don't have a crystal ball, I can't, I can't tell, I mean, in the past, since I've been here, very first year, we had an audit finding for both EMS and the self-insurance fund not being appropriately funded. Last year, with this fund, we had to go out and do operating transfers, pulling money from other funds to keep Fund 263 solvent. That's what precipitated us to have to change the plan and the benefits, and basically take benefits away from the employees. The interesting thing that's happened this year that hasn't happened in, since I've been here, I can't speak to when it's happened before, we had a change in the cost going out, in that we haven't had as many really sick people as the county has had in the past year. I don't remember the numbers offhand, I want to say in the past several years, it's been five high claimants, and right now, we're only at around, I want to say, two? So that's what's created this fund, Fund 263, to become solvent overnight. It may not be solvent next year, we may go back to five claimants or more, which we need the cash in that fund, because it's not an optional, when the bills come, we've got to pay it. That's why all the funds need to be able to be standalone solvent on their own, especially if we've got to draw for the self-insurance fund.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
As part of that, and I was going to do this at the last, and it's about the growth plan, and about the growth of Oak Ridge and how much it's contributing back, because we had substantial growth last year from retail revenue and housing. And we all know that there's big housing developments happening now in Anderson County. We know that this Main Street project has brought a lot of revenue to Anderson County and some of the, you know, the things that Commissioner Meredith has been working on as chamber, been over the chamber, what he's bringing in. So there's substantial growth that's going to help cover this, because once you do a tax increase, you never get, you never put it back in the checkbook, you just keep it in the bank. So, and if you'll indulge me, and this comes from John Hootery. Four new stores at Main Street could generate more than $600,000 in tax revenue, city says. Revised master plan for Main Street Oak Ridge, Oak Ridge Municipal Planning Commission was discussed and proposed revisions during a work session on Thursday, April 11, 2019. The four new stores at Main Street Oak Ridge could generate 150 jobs and generate more than $600,000 in sales and property tax revenues for Oak Ridge and Anderson County, according to calculations by City Economic Development Consulting. Estimated new revenues could include $572,000 and $96 in sales tax revenues and $116,965 in property tax revenues for Oak Ridge and Anderson County, according to calculations. The portion of new sales tax revenues for just Oak Ridge could total $385,158, according to the calculations. The four new stores are revised plan for Main Street, 58-acre redevelopment. And I guess that's in my proposal, is that, you know, we're looking at a growth plan, and we see these revenues that's going to be coming in. And I know it's forecasting, but we do the same thing when we operate off a deficit.
The only point that I would add to that, and I'm not saying that the growth isn't there, the majority of the local option sales tax that we collect goes to the schools. So it's not going to fund these other funds that we're talking about right now. Also, the Main Street project in Oak Ridge is on a TIF, so that growth in property tax, the county's not going to enjoy for another, I want to say, 19 years, 18 years? We just calculated the TIF. So I just, the funding source isn't there for the short, shorter term, even though the growth is there, and it is benefiting the schools. So, I just wanted to add that.
No, it's good comments. Commissioner Smallridge.
Part of my question was answered with Commissioner Meredith's question on salaries, but, you know, I do think we need, and I appreciate Commissioner Isabel's motion, but I do think we need to go back as a Budget Committee and look very hard at each budget. Just two programs alone, we've got 31 positions. We were asking for possibly increasing, and I think we've approved those already as a Budget Committee. So we're looking at 31 positions, I think that's something we've got to look at. I wonder too, if at some point, it'd be worth talking about priorities as a commission. What, you know, in general, what are our priorities? Is it salaries for our employees? I think, if I'm correct, nothing is funded for capital outlay in terms of your proposal, Commissioner?
No, I think that capital outlay would probably have to be a tax proposal, increase that.
Okay. I think at some point, it might be worth us talking about priorities.
Good comments. Commissioner McCamey.
Chairman, just to follow up on Commissioner Fritz's, about the reoccurring, we're actually putting three cents back in that we're taking out of the self-insurance fund.
Well, equivalent of three. Right now, the self-insurance fund does not get tax levy.
Right.
It only gets...
But it's the equivalent of three cents.
Right, so it's moving the cash out of Fund 263 into the other respective funds. Has nothing to do with the tax levy.
Okay. And is our, what's the fund balance in County General Fund at the present?
Right now, it's around $4.5 million. But I also know of some large appropriations that are going to be drawing that down. We've got pending litigation, we've got the inmate medical and dental that are going to be drawing that down, well below, well, I won't say well below, but below $4 million.
Okay, and the rollover money, what have you figured on that? We always have...
Right now, I'm not budgeting or planning on rollover money. There may be some.
And that's usually about $1 million to $1.5 million?
This year, it was closer, I want to say to $2 million, but the spending has increased this year. So it, based on, I was looking at that today, based on current spending and if revenue were to come in at 99.9%, like it did last year, we might have a surplus of $150,000. I mean, it's, it may be very close this year. I don't think we're going to enjoy a million-dollar rollover like we have in the past, because it's being spent.
Okay. Can you get us an estimate on that before our budget meeting?
We've got two more months of operating expenses. Payroll is almost, payroll and fringe is over 65% of this county's budget.
Right.
That's going to be recurring. We've already paid for 100% of the fire truck that was using this year's money appropriated for it.
Thank you, thank you.
I don't know what people are going to spend or not going to spend, in between now and then to June.
I know we usually have, you know, usually around $1.5 million. And if we, if we just come back to the $700,000 this year, which would be half, that would fund the employees' raises for the next year.
The elections and the change in some of those elected offices and the way they're now rolling, I think is going to change the amount of the rollover that the general fund sees.
One other thing, Ms. Chairman, I think just about all the fee offices have increased fees that will be coming back into the county.
And that's in this figure, that's, it's actually the same on both presentations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McCamey, thank you, Natalie. Commissioner Jaeger.
Thank you, sir. I'm with Commissioner Fritz on the 263. The Board of Trustees has really worked hard to try to maintain it a two-and-a-half-month expense cushion, I can't remember the exact...
We're not, we're not there yet?
Yeah, but that's what we're trying to achieve.
We were, we, the reserve fund policy that we discussed at the Board of Trustees was to put a reserve fund policy that would restrict one-and-a-half months' worth. We've been wanting to get to two months' worth, but, and then the Board of Trustees didn't approve that policy.
Okay. There's been a lot going on. So I, we are just a couple of people away from having to come back and ask for $100,000 again and again and again. And I don't, I don't like raiding that, that fund, that plan fund. It feels like what the federal government has done to Social Security, they just, they take out of Social Security, then they owe it, and it's just, you know, it's killing itself by that. So I just, I can't, I can't support raiding that fund. It's, it needs to have a balance.
Thank you, Commissioner Jaeger. Commissioner Denenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Following up with Commissioner Jaeger just said, I totally agree. I don't want to see that fund to the point that we don't have the money when it's needed. With that said, I think at this point, we really do need to prioritize. I think there are several things that need to just be put back to Budget Committee and really taken a harder look at. And once we move past this motion, I think I have one to make on my own. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Denenberg. Commissioner Meredith.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Appreciate you letting me speak twice on this motion. First, I want to go back and clarify, I know you've clarified it twice, but I can support Commissioner Isabel's motion. I know there's recurring dollars for the 2% raise for these employees. And I know you've, you've kind of said it twice, but that recurring money has to be in those codes for these folks to get that 2%.
So from my perspective, the revenue coming, it's not revenue, the cash coming to fund the current motion would not necessarily be recurring cash coming in to the respective funds to fund that 2% cost of living increase.
So...
The expense would be reoccurring.
Right.
But the funding source would not necessarily be.
So how much on a tax increase are we going to have to do to cover the difference in what Commissioner Isabel is saying? I guess that's the bigger question.
A 2% cost of...
4,396,330.
Right, that was across all the funds.
Correct.
So, I don't, the original motion in the Budget Committee was to have three cents on the tax levy to be able to fund a 2% cost of living increase with any of the remainder to go towards remedying any of the disparities in compensation.
Right.
So that's, I think, where the equivalent of three pennies would fund, but in this motion, it's not a recurring funding source, even though it is a recurring expense. Now, if the self-insurance fund continues to enjoy a surplus, then it could be a recurring, but...
Well, and I would support, as Commissioner Denenberg said, there'll be another motion, and whatever the shortfall is that Commissioner Isabel is doing, we need to fund that in another motion, because employees have got to have this raise. Along with that clarification, if you look at the email that was sent today on the last five years estimated revenues, you know, just in the last three years, we've, our estimated revenues have went up $1.2 million to Commissioner Isabel's point. I do think the revenue will grow, the growth is there in this county. Each, each and every year, the last three years, we've increased. Also agree with Commissioner Fritz and Commissioner Jaeger, my colleague on the Board of Trustees, if we do rob this fund, we could be coming back here. You know, we came back twice last year, three times, three times last year. I do see that, but I also think we've got to do some creative financing, to put it eloquently, to fund employee raises as well as these other deficits, and this would help. Again, this body controls 263. I just want to let you know, we'd have, we may have to come back, but a half a million dollars might get us through another year, especially with a new provider and new plan change and all that. So I will support this, but I do need to know the difference in the dollars as far as to fully fund the 2%.
Thank you, Commissioner Meredith. Commissioner Isabel.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. And really, the reason that I made this as a motion was to be able to get discussion, to get this out, to speak to, you know, all the commissioners and to the public as an idea, and I'm sure that this thing can be, you know, worked on, and I'll rescind the motion, but now I think that, you know, the Budget Committee sees, you know, where I'm trying to come from and trying to do it without a tax increase, but I do understand that capital projects like the school and the jail and all, it can be funded from that. But if you do that, I, personally, I won't vote for a tax increase, but if you take steps like this, it's going to draw down the amount of tax to have to put on the taxpayer. So I rescind my motion, Ms. Chairman.
Okay, so you're officially rescinding your motion. You're rescinding the, the, the second of the motion, except that...
No, you can't rescind the motion unless you've voted rescinded it, though.
I have to check with you as the second, don't I?
Withdraw.
Oh, okay, so withdraw, yeah, sorry, rescind.
Well, I would recommend is that we take the motion that was made and refer it to the Budget Committee, make it a referral motion, and it gives them something to go on. They look, they look at it, and it's just a referral motion, the Budget Committee looks at that and tweaks it, and then comes back with a recommendation to us. I mean, that's, their job is to recommend a budget to us, and this just gives them a blueprint of how we, you know, some commissioners are thinking, and gives them some things that maybe they didn't know about originally. So it goes back to the Budget Committee if you refer it, and I would, I would be in favor of that, just referring that motion to the Budget Committee. favor of that, just referring that motion to the Budget Committee.
I still believe that's a referral.
So, we have a motion on the floor, though. Are you going to resc, you've asked to rescind it. I'm not sure how we handle that now since he's asked for it.
Typically, you can rescind.
What's that, sorry?
Typically, you can rescind.
Camperson.
Once it's been made a second, you have to either vote it up and down or refer.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Okay, so, you'd like to refer it to the Budget Committee, the second are okay with that? All right, any other discussion? Commissioner Val, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no problem with sending any recommendation back to the Budget Committee for us to discuss. That's our job. So, I, I don't object to that at all. But I would like to clarify a couple of points. Unit one for the jail is not capital outlay. I don't want anybody to get that misconception. Unit one for the jail was people, it was salary, it was personnel, so I don't want anybody getting that convoluted and getting that confused. Having said that, if, if our Budget Committee wants to go back and review everything, I'm with that as well. But I would like to make a suggestion to my Budget Committee members. There's a big book down in Annette's office, and if I am correct, and Natalie or Annette can correct me if I'm wrong, it has specifics on each budget proposal. And I would suggest each of us, especially on the Budget Committee, I'd invite all commissioners to go down there and spend some time looking through that book.
Some of us already have.
Yeah, some of us have. But I think if, if we had that prior knowledge ahead of time, and we already had a lot of answers to the questions that we have, it may save us a lot of time from having to come back and, and do this again. So, just throwing that out there, not trying to sound smart alecky or anything, and my wife tells me I do that a lot. I apologize if that came across that way. But I think a lot of the information that we've been hashing out here today could have been answered with a little bit of research if we went down and looked at that book. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Val. Point taken. Commissioner McCamie.
I'm...
You're good?
Yeah.
All right, so, we've had a referral motion on the original motion, which is to take three cents, three pennies, from Fund 263.
The equivalent of...
The equivalent to, yes, yeah, correct. And then break it down as presented, Penny EMS, Penny Sheriff, the Anderson County Health Department, solid waste, and then 2,500 to each volunteer fire department, including...
Rescue.
Yes. Am I leaving anything out? So, that's the referral motion back to Budget Committee. Seeing no more questions, let's go to the board and vote. And again, this is just a referral motion back to budget. Thirteen yes, three noes. Motion passes to refer it back to budget as presented in that motion. All right, thank you. Natalie, could you just quickly, if you don't mind, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you know a lot more about this than I do, could you go over the last five years? I mean, you sent that to me, and I appreciate it. Could you just, like, did you have something else you wanted to talk about?
No, I don't know that I can go in, I didn't study the last five years.
Well, I mean, estimated revenues, and then estimated expenditures, total available funds. Of course, they change the titles time to time, but basically, it looks like we're at 28 million, 29 million, 29 million.
You're, are you talking about expenditures?
Yes. The fund, the fund request for the last five years has been anywhere from 27 to 28 million, right? Just for the...
Yeah, in 2016, it started at 25 million. It went up to 26 million in 2017, 26.5 million in 18, and 27.4 million in 2019. And now, it's budgeted, I mean, based on what's been approved, it's at 30 million for this year.
And any, have we lost money in the last five years based on those, I mean, we haven't went backwards except one year, or did we? I don't, I didn't...
These were budgets, actual performance would be a different, obviously, a different question, a different answer.
I guess my point is, we've been maintaining pretty well, from what I can gather, and on the budgets as presented. This year, we seem to have an uptick in the request of, you know, two, almost three million dollars, 3.3, I think it is, total.
So, maybe trying to answer your question, the last five years, every budget had a deficit associated with it.
Mm-hmm. But throughout those years...
We didn't necessarily close in actual experience a deficit, but last year being example number one, we didn't have a deficit budget last year. I don't recall the year before whether we had a deficit or not.
Okay.
I mean, obviously, we've been building up the fund balance.
Yes, correct.
So, there has been surplus...
To work from, basically.
That's built that fund balance up to where it is right now.
And I, and I think that Commissioner Isbell's point, and Commissioner Meredith and several others, our, our revenue's going to continue to climb. I mean, the internet sales tax is going to kick off, I think it's October 1st, 2019, where those funds are going to come back to the county. And I recognize they're not going to start coming back October 1st, but those funds will be coming back, and I'm not sure, and maybe Commissioner Mead might have more information on what those totals will be. But when those funds came back, come back, will those have to be earmarked to the schools as well?
I don't, I don't know the, I don't know the legislation tied, or if there's been any...
It's sales tax money, so I, I would imagine it would be.
Then it would be, the majority goes back to the schools then.
So, from, from my perspective, we could certainly earmark those funds as they start coming in later, of course, they're not here now.
They would automatically, if, if legislation has them tied to the schools, they're automatically going to be receipted into the schools' fund.
I think that's important, and the school system probably is aware of it, and maybe they have some numbers put together on it, but I think that's going to be a pretty good shot in arm, I think. Commissioner Meredith gave me a look over there, so maybe I'm wrong. Every time we buy something from Amazon, the money wasn't coming into the state of Tennessee like it should be when we pay our taxes. Now, it's going to come back to the state, and it's going to be redistributed to all the counties appropriately to be utilized for schools and things like that. So, that starts October 1st. That, that law passed just recently at the legislative in Nashville. So, Commissioner Meredith, sir, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just know we referred Commissioner Isbell's motion back to our Budget Committee. I'll let the Budget Chair fill in the remarks that I don't make, but it seems like that, I thought that was a great idea to start off this, put this body on something to fund. You know, we're going to sit here for however long and figure out who wants to make an motion and how we're going to amend it. My colleagues on Budget Committee, we've made so many discussions, we finally made three motions, and now we sit here amongst our other colleagues, and it looks like we're at an impasse again. I just don't think it's fair, personally, but hey, I get it. However, I do think we have another issue looking us in the face, and we're going to lose our Finance Director here on May 23rd. And wouldn't it be nice if we could sit here the next two hours with a focus of funding a budget and walking out of here and giving her the budget she wanted as a way out? I just think it's our fiduciary responsibility to pass a budget. We've got it all in front of us. I know someone don't want a tax increase, I get it. But I don't, as a member of Budget Committee, I'm open for why ideas, just like Commissioner Isbell came up. I mean, so, Mr. Chairman, I don't know what to say, but we could sit here for another two hours deferring it back to Budget Committee. And if that's the will of the, if that's the will of this commission, then let's just do that and go home.
Well, and I agree with many of your comments, however, that's what was asked of this body, is to refer it back to Budget. It wasn't a referral here to say, pass it. It was here to take it up, discuss it, kick it around, and that's what we've been doing. Commissioner White, I'm going to come back to you. Commissioner Denenberg, is that all right, sir? And you'll be next.
I'll defer.
Okay, Commissioner White, sorry, sir, go ahead.
On the floor. We, as a Budget Committee, we asked for this meeting here because we wanted to get everybody's input. Now, if we go back to our Budget Committee, not knowing the pleasure of all 16 of us, we're going to sit at our Budget Committee, and we're going to make motions, and we're going to talk about what we need to do, what, what our Budget Committee needs. We need a commitment from this body right here of what kind of a tax increase that you'll permit us to work with. We've got a Budget Director that's, got a ton of knowledge. She can help us, but she's going to be leaving. We need some, some direction from this body to where we can work with. We've got probably 20 hours invested in this, in this budget, and we, we've done nothing. I mean, we've, we've passed, we passed a Cadillac version of the EMS. We've gave the sheriff, or we talked about giving the sheriff everything he asked for. We can't fund it. Now, we need to know, and we're, and we're meeting Monday, I mean, we're meeting Thursday again of this week. We need to know, and, and Chairman, I would love for you to take the lead on this. We need to know what this body is willing to fund. If we want to fully fund EMS, then we want to, we're talking, I've heard on, I guess everybody listens to WYSH, anywhere from 25 to 50 cent tax increase. I know every one of you guys. I, I mean, I don't know any of you personally, but I know we're not going to sit here and pass a 50 cent tax increase. I know that. But are we going to pass a 40? Will we pass a 30? Will we pass a 20? Or will we pass a 10? Or do we not want a tax increase? We need, the Budget Committee, we need to know this while we've got Natalie, and I'm, I'm not saying that she's the all and all, but she can help us, she's got 15, 16 more days. She's got enough days left to where she could help us formulate. We need to know from you guys today what we can spend and what you'll commit to. And if we're not willing to commit, then I tell you, I've talked to some of you personally this last week or two. I would like to see us pass a, a resolution to keep on going like we're going until September, or I would like to see us pass this next year's budget with last year's numbers without a tax increase. We've got the 205 building that we're going to have to decide something on. We've got the loan forgiveness for EMS that we're going to have to decide something on. We've got a lot, and I, you can tell, I ain't no good speaker, but I'm, I'm trying to tell you what I feel, is we need direction, we need to know, we need to, when I, in my little business, if I have to buy, if I need a truck, I need to figure out how much money, when I go to Fox Toyota, I need to know how much money I can spend. And that's what I'm asking you here today. Tell us, give us direction as to what we can go back, and as Brother Bob said over here a minute ago, we need to prioritize this. Give us a number of what you're willing to pass, and let us come up with a formula, come up with a plan, and then we'll bring it back to full commission. But we want to know what you're willing to spend. If you're, if you don't want a tax increase, tell us right today. And if you're willing to go 10 cents, or 15 cents, or nothing, we, we need to know that. And if I've made a fool of myself, I'm sorry, but we need to know, we need direction. And that's what we tried to get everybody in the room today for, is to give us some clarification as to what you're willing to spend. And, and I guess we'll go from there. Very well, Senator. Well, I, we need to know. So, tell us...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, good comments, and we understand.
Yeah, can I make that a motion?
What's that?
That we come up with a, give us a figure. I'd like to make a motion that you, as Chairman, lead this Commission Committee.
You sure you want me to do that?
Yes, sir.
Because it's going to be pretty simple.
Okay, I would love, I'd like to make a motion that we get a, a figure from this body as to the amount of money that the Budget Committee is allowed to spend.
Well, being the chairman, I can't make a motion. Mr. Jameson, did you push motion, or you just want to speak?
I want to speak. No, I want to make a motion.
Yes, sir. And I'll come right to you if it's okay. I don't want you to feel like I'm intruding on your time. I get nervous when Mr. Ja, I talk to Mr. Jameson, I feel like I'm in school still, and I'm going to get my diploma taken from me or something. No, I appreciate the comments, and, and I agree, and yes, Natalie has a short, very short runway, and we're going to lose her experience, but here's the way I look at it. We have $4 million minus the 500,000 for stuff on the table right now for potential lawsuits or whatever it is. So, and, and forgive me, Mr. Jameson, if my math don't come out, I think it's about 24 cents of tax dollars, and I don't think that's right either, but we got $4 million, is what I'm saying. You got $4 million sitting there to work with. I mean, now, some commissioners sitting around here will say, no, that's one-time money, 10-time money, it don't matter to me, money is money, I've always said that when I sit up here, and money's money. It's $4 million. You got $4 million to work with. I mean, that's the way I see it. I imagine if we run things properly again, we'll have $4 million or more next year if we keep the budgets where they're at and run business as normal. I just, I'm just a little disappointed that we walk around and talk about a 40 cent tax increase, 50 cent tax increase, and, and I, I just think, you know, it's just Tracy, okay? I just think that's a little much myself to dive into at once. I see nothing wrong with passing the budget the way it is, 27, 28, whatever that number is, and if the sheriff wants to come in here and ask for 1.3 million dollars to do wing whatever expansion and hire 15 people because he needs it to open that wing, I don't know why we as a body can't sit around and go, yes, let's do it. Now, I don't know why we got to do it on the front end. I know it makes business sense and accrual purposes, but I'm not a CPA. I'm just Tracy, a little, you know, small-town guy or whatever. But I, I just, same thing with EMS, you know, EMS can come up here and ask for what they need. I just don't know why we have to sit here today and say, we got to commit to tax increase, she's leaving tomorrow, so let's raise taxes. This guy has never voted for taxes, it's no secret, that's why I've tried to be impartial. It's hard for me to sit here as Chairman and, and say I'm not going to support a tax increase because it's unfair to all the commissioners sitting around this table. But most of you know I'm not going to vote a tax increase anyway, so it doesn't really matter, I guess. So, I'm going to shut up. Mr. Jameson, you have the floor, sir.
I make a motion that we vote for a 20 cent tax increase.
We have a motion on the floor for a 20 cent tax increase. Do we have a second? Have a second. Commissioner Mead, seconding. Any discussion on the 20 cent tax increase as presented? Commissioner Isbell.
I'm deferring right now, this is not why I pushed my button, but you're just about to push a button.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Got to remember, we're put here by the people that we represent in our district. And come up here today and vote for a tax increase without talking to those people and getting input from them, is that a fair thing to do? I've talked with several church elders over the last couple of weeks. I've had EMS, I've had Nathan Sweet come to Fox's diner twice to talk to people, and I've talked to them about a tax increase, and nobody that I spoke with from my district favors a tax increase. And I'm here to represent the people that put me here. And if this body does say today that we need a 20 cent tax increase, I wouldn't be able to vote for that without taking it back to the people and having some type of community meeting and say, and, and we did this before when I first came on, Zach Bates and I, we had community meetings, and we discussed about, and Jim will remember that, we discussed about the need for the tax increase, and I did vote for that tax increase, but I won't vote for another one unless it comes up with a, you know, building a school and a jail, because that, that was part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Denenberg, I apologize, and Mr. Jim, I'm going to come back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and that's quite all right. Being on the Budget Committee, I certainly understand where Chairman White is coming from. We are really battling with what are we go, what do we do as far as funding the needs that departments are requesting. In my mind, the tax dollars that are paid by the residents of Anderson County are paid for services. The Sheriff's Department is a service. EMS is a service. And these are services that are put in place to... And these are services that are put in place to take care of the citizens of Anderson County. And those are the two budgets that I feel that we need to look at very sternly. I too have had conversation with Director Sweet on more than one occasion since the budget was passed. And I have to say that I am the person who made the motion, and when I was asked if I was voting or making the motion for Budget One or Two, and someone said Budget One, I said, yes, Budget One, not thinking that it was actually going to pass. But it did. In retrospect, that was my conversation with Director Sweet. He feels that, you know, that that was something that he was not really expecting as well, and it's sharp in his pencil on, and I really appreciate that of him. So I am going to make a motion at this, well, I can't because we have one on the floor, but I will make a motion after this one is taken care of.
Commissioner Denenberg, I appreciate it. Again, I apologize, I missed you, so.
That's all right.
We'll come back to you after we take this vote.
But I'm not quite finished.
Oh, so go ahead. You have the floor.
That's all right. The other thing too, from what I have been seeing as a resident of Anderson County for almost 20 years, is the way things are being put off. They continue to be put off, we're just going to be digging the hole deeper. Now, it's time to stop, figure out what our priorities are, and fund them. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Denenberg. I believe you were next, wasn't you, Commissioner McCamey? For some reason, it flipped over. All right, we'll go ahead and stay back in order now. Commissioner Mead.
Yeah, well, I have been talking to people about the budget. Nobody likes to talk about tax increases. But I'll tell you what I've heard from my constituents, and I've talked to a lot of them. They recognize the county has to have competitive salaries if we want to keep quality people. They want to have a timely and professional ambulance service. Right now, I'm the only, I'm one of two county Commissioners with the district that has had a reduction in coverage of our area because we don't have enough ambulances and qualified people in the ambulance service to do it. None of the rest of you have had to go through that yet. We've actually had one of our ambulance things now is closed parts of the time, all during the week, because they don't have enough people and resources. I've talked with my constituents, they want well-trained and well-supplied volunteer fire departments across the county. It's a whole lot cheaper to have volunteer fire departments than it is to hire professional fire departments. It would cost us six times the amount of money that we're putting into volunteer fire departments to be able to support that with a professional service. And so we need to properly fund and train those guys. They don't need to spend half their time out on the street with a boot trying to get another couple of dollars so they can buy absolutely necessary supplies. They also want to have a well-equipped and well-trained Sheriff's Department. Now, one of the problems with our Sheriff's Department funding is that we, as a county, the county taxpayers are paying over a million dollars a year in order to have state inmates in our jails. Yes, it costs the taxpayers of Anderson County over a million dollars a year to take care of all of the state inmates that we have to take care of. I see that as a feeling at a state level because they just won't fund prisons, but they stick us with them. What if we had that million dollars back in our budget? Wouldn't this have been an easier meeting if we had a nice continuing, ongoing, extra million dollars a year stuck into our budget? And so, but people want to have a well-trained and properly-equipped Sheriff's Department. Now, I'll tell you, the other thing I'm hearing from people, particularly the ones that are business people, we need to have capital money set aside so that every time we have a roof collapse, or something happened, or some building has to be replaced, or something gets damaged in a storm, we have to go out immediately and borrow money. I mean, any financial planner tells us people, make sure you always have an emergency fund. We don't have an emergency fund, we just have a credit card. And anything that comes up goes on the credit card. That's just not very sound financial management, and I think we need to make these happen. So, is 20 cents the right amount? Well, I seconded the motion, okay? I think 10 might work. I think 20 might be better to actually include some of the capital funding and better support the sheriff and the EMS. But I don't think, the fact of the matter is, the revenues have not grown fast enough for the increases in costs that are forced upon this county by the state of Tennessee and the federal government. The regulations and the requirements, I mean, I was in sub-range, you know how many square feet of unoccupied floor space I had in my, in my, in my living quarters? About three square feet is what I had. So the fact that a prisoner's got to have 25 square feet per inmate of unobstructed, this doesn't include where there's a chair, or a desk, or a toilet, or something, it's unobstructed floor space, I think that's ridiculous. But it is the law, and the sheriff has to comply. And so, we have to give him the money to do his job if we want him to do it. Those are just some of the things that my constituents talk to me about. I have talked to them. And they want us to do this in a sound, financially sound way, and taking money, which is basically a savings account, the 263 fund, taking a half a million dollars out of that is really taking one-time money and using it to fund long-term things.
Commissioner Mead, let's stay on the motion that we have. Let's move forward, and let's talk about the motion, and do you have anything else you need to add?
Well, this was all in support of the motion, so I'm sorry if you didn't like the way I did it.
Commissioner Mead, it doesn't have anything to do with whether I like it or don't like it, the way you look, the way you talk, if you've been in the Navy, if you've been at the government, it has nothing to do with those things. It has to do with the 20 cent tax increase, and the square footage of the naval submarine has nothing to do with the motion. Now, if you disagree with that, that's fine, I disagree with you, so we're good to go.
Well, I disagree with you disagreeing with me. Okay.
Okay. Tell us the next.
Everything that I've said is in direct support of that 20 cent increase. Nothing I said was not in direct support of that.
I don't argue that statement at all.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to have to start putting our Commissioners on with clock, I reckon. Commissioner McCamey.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that Commissioner White asked for some guidance, I guess, for the Budget Committee. And the motion that we referred to the Budget Committee outlines a no-tax-increase budget with the exception of capital outlay and the school department. So the general fund that we have referred to the Budget Committee is a no-tax increase. It's basically the same budget, using the figures that he talked about from Fund 263. Using that and using capital outlay request, I would like to see the Budget Committee come back and rather than us give you a number, you give us what you, what the Budget Committee recommends. I think that's the duty of the Budget Committee, is to present a budget to this full commission that can be voted up or down. And if you all come in with a 54 cent tax increase, which is what our Finance Director said would be needed, then, you know, if that's your final say as a Budget Committee, I'll vote on it. I'll not vote for it, but I'll vote on it. But I think your job as the Budget Committee, and yours as Chairman, is to come back with a budget that this Commission can vote up or down. If we vote it down, then it's up to us to start making necessary cuts or additions wherever we need to. And I like the idea that Commissioner Jameson put out about 20 cents, but I don't know that we need 20 cents. I mean, the schools asking somewhere between, what, eight and 10 cents?
Five would cover their deficit, and nine would cover their capital.
That would cover everything, nine cents.
No, five would cover their deficit, and nine is their capital request.
So you're talking about 14 cents?
14, that's just the schools.
Okay. And then would the other six pennies take care of all the capital for the county, the county's general fund, capital outlay?
No, based, and I believe the capital documents are in the materials that the Commission was forwarded, based on the budget, based on the capital requests that have come to me, yeah, that include all of the capital requests across all of the funds over the next five years, it to be fully funded would be 12 cents on the tax levy.
So 12 plus the 14 for the schools?
No. You would be, the schools and their budget proposal is a total of 14 for their general purpose school fund and for their capital requests.
Okay, and the capital.
That's just for next fiscal year.
Okay.
Okay? What's in this budget proposal as it stands right now, the motion that came from the Budget Committee is only to put a nickel for all the other capital needs across the county. When we've got costs over the next five years that on average are 12 cents, not 5 cents. So to appropriately fund the capital needs for everybody except the schools over the next five years, based on what we know right now, would be 12 cents.
12 cents in the county's general fund?
It'd be in the Capital Projects Fund, and it would be for capital projects across the county except for schools.
Okay. And the schools is nine cents this year?
They asked for nine, for this year, and I think it's in here as well. I want to say it's just shy of nine, it's 7.93 cents for what they're asking for next year, or the year after. Then it goes to 9.62, then to 9.14. Then they're asking for a school, which would be either 61 cents or a bond.
Well, that's, I don't want to just throw out 20 cents and say that's what you've got to work with. I mean, you know, I want you to come back and tell me exactly what it's going to cost and what it's going to fund. That's what I think the Budget Committee needs to do, is come back and say, this is the budget we're recommending, this is what it's going to cost. And then that gives us something to vote on.
Thank you, Commissioner McCamey. We have a motion on the floor. Commissioner Anderson.
Okay, 20 cent tax increase is $3.24 million, so I'm kind of going along with what Commissioner Smallridge and Commissioner Denenberg said about we need to prioritize. So Commissioner Jameson, do you have, did you have anything in mind, like what you felt like the needs were for the 20 cent tax increase when you proposed that?
I pulled that figure out sort of in the middle of what people hearing. I was amazed that people got this excited about it. This is what we should have been talking about it all along. I have no idea what this body's going to do. I think we're wasting our time to send it back to them, because then they're going to come back to us, and then we're going to talk about it some more. Now, Mr. Isbell talked to a lot of his people. I talked to a lot of people in Clinton too. I can't go anywhere if I don't run into people that I know. One of the first things they say, we don't want to raise taxes. Well, I say, okay, what about, do we need good ambulance service? Yeah, we want good ambulance service. I said, do you want good police department and jail and get out the crooks and stuff? Oh, yeah. I said, well, we're going to have to pay for that. Now, if you want to change this to 10 cents, 5 cents, 40 cents, then we can vote. If we want that much, we'll vote for it. If we don't want that much, we'll vote against it. So I think we're wasting our time just playing ping pong, sending it back to the committee, back and forth. We can decide this today just as easily as we can a week or two weeks from now. That's just an opinion. Thank you.
Good job. Well, I just think, yeah, we need to, there's got to be the prioritize list to go with whatever cent figure we send back to budget. It's not going to, Sheriff Barker said it's not going to do any good to say, here's $400,000, here's $500,000, here's six, he needs what he needs. So we either tell him yes or no on that $1.3 million amount or whatever, so I don't, I just wanted to see, get an idea of what 20 cents was going to pay for versus the 45 that's everything.
Good questions. Commissioner Anderson, perhaps Commissioner Jameson feels if the 20 cent passes, then the Budget Committee would take that and figure out how that would be applied, if that's fair? But good questions. Do you answer?
I think so.
Commissioner Jameson's back on you, sir. Do you have anything else? Or is that, you're next, no? Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, but Commissioner Anderson asked my question, so.
Commissioner Meredith, thank you, Commissioner Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since we're asking about a 20 cents, I think it would be appropriate to hear from Dr. Parrott on the school sides, since this 20 cents would affect that. If that's all right with you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Dr. Parrott.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I'll be very brief. The only thing that is new in our budget this year is a 2% pay raise, okay? We have, we've cut about $650,000 out of our budget this year to take care of some things, some increase in debt service, some increase in technology and curriculum and things like that. But 1.5 million dollars is a step increases, it's a $1,000 pay raise for everybody, and it's a $300 coverage more on insurance. That has nothing to do with the capital outlay, but, as you know, I'm too, if you ask these people behind me, I'm tight. But the problem is, we lose people every year to Knox County. Knox County's given a 3.5% pay raise. Clinton City's given, I've heard, $2,000 pay raise. And Oak Ridge has given, they've asked for, I think, 3%. And we become a training ground for everybody. And whether I like it or not, you're my only funding body. These city schools have a different funding strength. But the other thing, when we look at that, there's another problem that we have out here is, is I want to be out of debt. I just think we need to be out of debt. But at some point, we have to, we have to either stop spending, or we have to put money in the bank. And I really think, when you said 9 cents, if I could, we've really worked hard on a plan, and I think with 8 cents in the capital outlay fund, over the next 10 years, we can cut our deficit in half. And at that point, I still want to put money in our reserve. We have to have right at about $3 million in our reserve every year. And what we're doing is, we're spending, just to let you know, we spent $1 million out of our undesignated this year, and we bought textbooks, we bought technology, we bought band equipment, all the things that should be in our regular budget, we're buying it out of our undesign, so we can't raise that. I would really like to see that to where we could put that money over the next five years. And when we get ready to build a school in Claxton in five years, we've got $5 million sitting in the bank for a damn payment, because really and truly, Claxton needs a new school. We had to put on hold this year, we had $450,000 in our budget for a new school at, down at Grand Oaks. The bid's coming at $700,000. I didn't want to have to do that, Jim, I want to do it right. So we had to back off on that. We're going to try to rebid that and do this in the fall. But I don't want to, and I will, I don't want to have to decide, do I do capital projects or do I do pay raises? Because this board, the board decides, and I know, I believe the board will decide on pay raises, so in 10 years, we come back, we're another $11 million in the hole on capital project. And I know you're all in a tough spot, and as me, I live in Anderson County, I know what a tax increase is. But I also know that we've got to make sure that our students are, have a great school. Just to let you know, you know, this year, our school system, we lost $129,000 on the TIF this year. And I know that those things help us down the road, but when you get a hit like that, that really hurts your budget. So, just, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Parrott. Commissioner Scott.
Thank you. Schools are important, sheriffs are important, or the Department of EMS, it's important. Everything's important. We've got so many priorities on the Budget Committee. Every department that has brought their proposals forward has fluff. There's fluff in there somewhere, whether it's postage stamps, water, uniforms, I don't care what it is, there's fluff. Several weeks ago, I brought a representative from AMR to the Operations Committee, and it was that night because of schedules. There were no colleagues. There were no calendar conflicts, et cetera. And it was the same night that EMS brought their plan forward for the Operations Department. There have been comments, emails flying around. "I need everyone to gather together and let's work as a team. I can't do this on my own."
Commissioner Scott, is this on the motion?
It's on the motion.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
"I can't do this on my own. We need to work as a team. We need to save the EMS department. Everyone's going to lose their job." Firstly, everyone's not going to lose their job. Secondly, this is not a subscription that is being proposed. It is an opportunity for us to have a company manage the department. They would... In return, our EMS would have updated equipment... Wait a minute. Updated equipment. The employees would receive their pay raises.
Well, is this on the motion? The 20-cent motion?
It's about the 20 cents. Right now, the Cadillac version from the EMS department, I made a motion to reject it, and you could hear crickets in the room, and it did go through. It's for $7,95,772. 20 cents isn't going to touch that. They need equipment. They need supplies. Our buildings need repairs. We have an opportunity to get that much and then some, so that everybody else's budgets, where they're needed, the jail won't have to suffer, the schools won't have to suffer. 20 cents isn't going to do anything. According to the calculations that I seem to recall from budget meetings, we're at about 47 cents on a tax increase. Plus another 12 cents, you're looking at 60 cents for everybody they need and/or want. I'm all about the employees getting a pay raise. I'm tired of hearing about employees that have been with the county for 20 years making $8.50 an hour. I get it. We don't want our EMS to run around making $10 an hour. I agree. I don't want the jail employees to be making less money than the people over at Home Depot who are watering plants and listening to birds sing. No, I'm not going to agree to a 20-cent increase, a 50-cent increase, 75 cents. No! I'll give you 2. 2. 2 cents so that employees can get pay raises. But we have an opportunity to get more than that back. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Commissioner Fritz? Microphone. Microphone, Commissioner Fritz. Sorry.
The Budget Committee has met numerous times, quite a few meetings, and we have worked hard and diligently through all the different departments and their meetings and everything. And this has been a very difficult time, you know, listening to what all the different departments do want and need and the things. And yes, some people may not think that we made cuts, but we have refused a lot of things that some people have wanted. And the needs that the Sheriff Department is talking about with the jail, I have been making the comments about that probably for the past eight years or longer, you know, ever since we built the jail, that we have not adequately funded the jail because we built them, but we never funded the positions. And now that... We got to have the positions because we're at the mercy of the state because they are about to decertify us, and we don't have no control on that. If they come in to decertify us, we're hurting. So we're out of control on that. So basically, the Budget Committee was looking at that part of it, you know? We don't have a say, you know? We got to do something to address that issue with the state. The part with Art Miller, him losing the dentist, the position he's filling helps to replace the dentist that was serving in Oak Ridge, and plus, too, that one dentist provided the dental services for all the kids in all the schools of Anderson County. And we couldn't see what little bit he was asking for, you know, for all the kids to lose out on that variable service that he provided. Solid waste, you know? You just have to go out there and see what the solid waste is doing and see, you know, that one extra person that they got to have. And then I keep hearing the word from numerous, on the radio and everything else, that the Cadillac version of the EMS... It's not a Cadillac version. All they did was present a budget proposal that went through and addressed the needs that was presented in the EMS audit. And then we went in and took out certain positions that we didn't think was needed, and only addressed the cause to help increase the response time, so we wouldn't have the whiteouts and things, that and the other. So we were sort of dealing with that. And hopefully, you know, we presented to the full commission what we thought, you know, addressing, unfortunately, the needs that came before the county at this particular time, you know? The county is in a hurting situation. I mean, the funds have not... Revenue has not kept up, and we keep getting further and further behind because Mr. Denenberg says we keep putting it off and putting it off and putting it off. And as now, it's come to the point in time, you know, how long can we continue to put it off? And sometimes we just got to step up to the plate, and we're going to have to do something. And maybe the 20 cents may not be enough. Maybe... I don't think it's going to be enough, but at least it's a start. But going back to the Budget Committee, I don't know how good that's going to work. I mean, we're going to look at it again and may present the same thing back again. I don't know. But we do need help from the other commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Okay. Commissioner Jameson, your motion was to pass a 20-cent tax increase, not refer it back to budget. Is that correct, sir?
That's not what I said.
I'm just asking for clarification.
That was what we would suggest to them.
Okay, so it's a 20-cent...
Mr. White said he needed some guidance.
Okay.
And all we were doing was... And that was an arbitrary number.
Oh, that's fine.
You can raise it, you can lower it.
Just want to be sure that we're clear...
Eliminate it, that's fine.
I just want to be sure we're clear on the motion and what we're saying. So it's a 20-cent ass back to the Budget Committee.
That's what they... Yes.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you.
That's why I was asking. Is that the way the Seconder understood it, Commissioner Me? Yes, sir. All right.
Can I just make a brief statement?
Sure, sure, sure.
All we're really trying to establish is that the Budget Committee needs to know that this body will support something. If they have absolutely no idea if it's 0 or 50, and we send them back to deliberate, they don't know what to come back with. If 20 doesn't pass, I'm going to make a motion for 19, and we're going to just keep going until we get down.
All right, let's take one. Let's vote. Get the board ready. Everybody vote your conscience. 20 cents is on the table. Back to the Budget Committee. Yes is for, no is against. Seven yes, nine noes. Motion fails.
All right, sir. Are you making a motion for 19 cents?
I make a motion that we recommend to them that they can consider up to 19 cents on the tax rate to resolve this. This is going to take incredible amounts of balancing and setting priorities to do this because it's less than half of what was identified as being needed to meet all the needs for the departments. Some of those things can be cut, and I agree with that, okay? There's some things we might not be able to do, and that's just the way it is. I do the same thing in my household.
Is that your motion?
I'll second it.
So your motion is for a 19... Up to 19-cent increase referred back to budget. Is that correct?
Well, I'm disappointed. The Budget Director or Chairman didn't vote for that. He asked for us to vote for a number, and then he didn't vote for it. I'm disappointed, jury. I really am. And I'm wondering if we go down, are you going to vote for 1 or is it going to be 0? That's kind of where... I know I'm not supposed to ask you a question, and I apologize, but I'd like to know where that the Budget Committee will accept a number.
That was a good motion, Commissioner Jameson. You did real well. You did exactly what the Budget Chairman asked, and we obliged it. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy. Commissioner Waddell?
Well, I'm on the Budget Committee, so I would like to have the opportunity to make the next motion if this one does fail.
Everybody's lining up with motions. I like it. And that's what we should have done an hour or two ago. All right. Commissioner Smallridge, sir?
I just want to clarify, we're talking up to 19 cents, so it could be anywhere between 0 and 19. Just let me... Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smallridge. Commissioner Vow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I heard what our Budget Director asked when he spoke, but I also heard what Commissioner McCamey said when he spoke. And now I kind of feel like Abraham when he was talking to the Lord about, you know, he kept going down and down and down and down. I'd like just for the Budget Committee to do its job. We've heard the comments here today. We know what we're looking at. We know what time constraints that we're under. I'm going to vote no on this motion, but I want us to just let the Budget Committee do its job. We'll come back with a proposal. We'll add it up to see what kind of an increase, if any, that we're talking about, and we'll let the process work like it was designed to work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sounds good. Commissioner Vow, I like it. Any other discussions on this motion? Does everyone understand the motion as presented? Any questions?
I'd like it being repeated.
Yes, sir. Would you like to prestate it?
My motion is to provide guidance to the Budget Committee that this body would consider, okay, up to a 19-cent tax increase if they find that that's necessary. That allows them to do nothing, it allows them to go up to 19, and have some assurance that this body would approve it. If the body won't approve any number, then we've already made our decision that we're not going to do anything with the budget.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Creasy? All right. All right, let's go to the board and vote. Yes would be for an increase to the budget up to 19 cents. Against? He put the pressure on... He put the pressure on way over.
I know. I apologize, jury, but I have to do that.
We have seven yes, nine noes. Motion failed. Commissioner Vow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Make a motion, we just refer. Ms. Denenberg would like to do that.
I tell you what, we'll cut a deal. Take the motion, another one can second it. Go ahead, Commissioner Denenberg.
Commissioner... Chairman, thank you very much. Commissioner Denenberg wishes to make... Would you all stop that, please? To make a motion that we're going to refer back to Commission for discussion, for further discussion, the EMS budget.
Say it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Denenberg, I think you meant back to budget.
Yes, I did.
No problem.
I don't know what I said.
I know what you meant. And Commissioner Vow, you okay with that? So the motion is on the floor by Commissioner Denenberg to refer back to Budget Committee, seconded by Commissioner Vow. The budget, you've heard the discussion today, and I'm confident the Budget Committee will come back. And I hope the Budget Committee comes back with a recommendation, and this body will take action. We'll either vote it up or vote it down. I think the intent of this meeting, Commissioner White, was for us to get some discussion so the Budget Committee could hear, the Commissioners could hear, the Director, Department Heads could hear what the thought processes were and whatnot. So I don't see it as a bad thing. I understand it's long and laborsome, and I apologize for that. And any questions on that motion, anyone, before we take a vote?
What is the motion?
To refer it back to Budget, back... Go ahead, sorry.
I specifically said that I am making a motion to refer back to the Budget Committee the EMS budget for further discussion.
Okay, I apologize. I thought you meant everything. Okay, so it's clarification. EMS budget, back to Budget Committee. Any other discussion? Let's go to the board and vote on it. 13 yes, 3 noes. Motion passes. Making progress.
Thank God.
Commissioner Fritz?
We refer all budgets back to the Budget Committee.
It's times like this, I'm glad Commissioner Fritz is the senior Commissioner in my district. We have a motion, we have a second by Commissioner Yeager. Any discussion on the motion to refer all budgets back to Budget Committee? Let's go to the board and vote on it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm hesitant.
It's okay.
Pass to do something today, and hopefully, we have accomplished something.
And knowing that we're going to listen to the will of the Budget Committee, and I think they've got a direction, and that's why I'm going to vote yes in favor of our Director, Jerry White.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the comment. 13 yes, 3 noes. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank everybody for taking time out of their day to come and share their opinions. And I think we've got the direction or the will, I think, of this Commission, and we'll do our best to bring you a budget that you can work with.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Any other items? Go ahead, man. Commissioner McCamey?
Director, go ahead and prepare a continuing budget resolution.
There's one in the package today. We could actually take action on it if we wish, but we don't have to right now. Okay.
Just wanted to make sure we had one in.
Yeah, we do. She has it prepared. Yeah. Okay. Looks good. Thank you. I had a motion... Did you have something, Commissioner Waddell? I apologize.
So we've looked at, we've heard 40 cents and down, but I haven't heard anyone, or I haven't seen anyone want to vote on a 0%. I'm on the Budget Committee, and I'm interested in being as close to 0 as we can. And I'd like to see what this body, if they're in favor of returning a 0% budget, just like Chairman White has asked when he got up and talked. So I'd like a vote on 0%.
We have... We have a motion, seconded. Yeah, I think we've already deferred all the budgets back, so you could give a recommendation probably, but... Yeah, I think you could take that action, Commissioner Waddell, in the Budget Committee. I think everyone heard the discussion around the table here, and I think we could probably get a good... I don't know where we're all at. I'm going to leave this up to the Commission because I'm not going to cut anybody off of discussion. Does the body want to take this up, or I feel like it's already been passed back to the Budget Committee? All budgets?
I had pushed my motion button earlier, but I didn't get the opportunity to make that motion.
It's just a recommendation, so I think you're right. He does have a second. Commissioner Anderson, yes, sir. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Commissioner Scott, discussion?
And a 0 increase, keep in mind, doing 0 would mean that the employees would not receive a pay raise, any of the county employees, okay? Just that's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Vow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to say, I'm not necessarily against that idea, but again, that's what the Budget Committee can discuss when that meeting comes up. So, and knowing Denver the way I do, I'm sure he'll bring it up at the Budget Committee, so he'll certainly have his opportunity to do so.
Pretty confident about that, yes. Thank you, Commissioner Vow. Appreciate it. Commissioner Jameson, sir?
Is it true that we haven't raised taxes in the last four, five... Is it true that we haven't raised taxes in the last four, five years?
No.
At least this year.
That was also included in the materials that was sent to full commission. The last time taxes increased was in 2015, and it increased from 2.529 to 2.7903, and it's been that for the last four fiscal years.
The highest it's ever been is 2.82.
No, the highest it's ever been was 3.4 back in 2004.
Ooh, wow.
The, the point I would like to make is, you people go buy a car, and you haven't been, bought a car in five years, you have what they call sticker shock. You go to the grocery store, that's every week you have the shock.
True.
I don't think we need to raise this tax a tremendous amount, but it would be a wise idea to consider raising it a reasonable amount to solve some of our problems. Thank you.
Commissioner Jamison. Commissioner Creasy.
Yeah, I just saw McCowen come in the door, and I promised her that I'd mentioned we're gonna need 18,000 per year scheduled for the next 15, 15 years to make all the ADA improvements that we need for county buildings.
What's your requirement?
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy.
I kept my promise. And we've listened to what I consider one of the best finance directors in the state. She's told us and gave us the guidance that we need to make the right decisions. And the Budget Committee brought us their decision. They passed it. I think some may now consider that that was overdoing it a little bit, but I'm not sure. The Sheriff, I'm convinced he needs his budget. I'm convinced the EMS needs an increase in their budget. And I'm convinced that the school, I mean, the county employees need a raise. Can we do that without having a tax increase? I don't think we can. And, and I'm not gonna vote to say that a zero budget will do it. I don't believe that we can possibly ignore our employees. We gotta have good employees, and it takes money to get good employees. And we're very fortunate to have the employees we've got. They're dedicated, they're professionals, real professionals. And you couldn't ask for a better school than we've got. It's, it's ranking right up there. Everyone used to say Oak Ridge was the best, but I say Anderson County is right there with them. They're right on top of it.
In some areas, better. Will say.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy. Commissioner Isbell.
On Commissioner Anderson's motion or suggestion, and that was the first referral motion, was to go back without a tax increase, but to fund the necessary things without a tax increase, just by moving pennies around, so.
Your motion, Commissioner Waddell, is, you'd like to get a poll of the Commission on who would support a zero tax request?
Yeah, beans as the, beans as the others failed, I would like to know if the, if the majority of the Commission wants a 0 percent tax increase, and that a way we're not working towards something that the majority of the Commission doesn't want.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say I favor a no tax increase budget, of course. I think everybody in here would, but is that realistic? I don't think so.
Commissioner Denenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well said, Commissioner McCamey. Do we want a tax increase? Absolutely not. Are we going to be able to get a good budget passed without one? Most likely not.
Good comments. Anything else? Let's go to the board and vote. Yes is, yes would be for a zero tax increase, recommendation back to the budget. No would be for a tax increase.
That's a trick question.
Yeah, I don't think that's...
I'm not gonna fall for it again, I'm gonna vote no.
I don't think that's necessarily either or.
Well, but you do have to vote.
Yeah, I don't mind voting, but I mean, just if we vote against this, it doesn't mean we're...
It's more of a poll for the Budget Committee to see what the votes look like, I would imagine, I don't know.
If you can, if you can vote for a 20 cents, then you can vote for 0 cents, it's as simple as that.
You're either voting for 0 cents and tax increase, or yes or no, 0 cents. It's that simple. Vote your conscience.
I'll be the only one.
Oh, there'll be several. All right. Votes are tallied, seven yes, nine noes, motion fails. All right. We have a motion adjourned. Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, I see the mayor raising her hand, uh-oh. Come on up here, mayor.
I'll be very brief. One thing that was not discussed, Commissioner Meredith touched on it, is I'm going to advocate for the Finance Department that if, maybe on Thursday, you could get some direction. We have, today's the 6th, Natalie leaves on the 23rd, Robbie is very capable as the Deputy Director, but again, there will be one person missing, and that's a very important person, so he's going to be taking her job and doing his job. We won't replace that until we do a Finance Director search. So, if we could get some kind of guidance on Thursday to where we can turn the Director loose, get her to build that budget, I don't think, oh, a continuing resolution is wise. It's, it does create a lot of issues. It creates issues for the schools, they have Head Start, they have programming, that where it creates issues. Last year, we moved pennies from debt service into our capital projects fund. So, when we're under a continuing resolution from last year, that money is not going to go in to that debt service fund, and then we have debt payments to make. And not that it creates a crisis, but it is a lot of work. So, just my two cents from the, for the Finance Office, if we could get something, you know, everybody could come to terms on Thursday, we could get this packaged up and rolled out and in the books before she ever heads off to her other future. For the most part. You could make it, you could make it happen, couldn't you?
She'll need support to make that happen.
That's just some, just some words.
Yeah, no, thank you, mayor, very well stated, good comments. Okay, we have a motion adjourned. Was there anything else to come forward to the body before we adjourn? Thank you all. We're adjourned.